Good morning.
We will call the meeting to order for Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand thirteen. First item is the approval of the agenda with one agenda addition.
Will you approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Approve payment of bills and vouchers.
Have they here?
Yeah.
I move.
Your motion is second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Next item is to review and adopt policy regarding use of county-owned property, planning and environmental programs director, Tim Magnus. Tell you what, Tim is not here, he should be here shortly.
We're five minutes early, ready?
Yeah. Do you have a committee report for us, chief?
Ah, committee report, oh, let's see here. Yes, yesterday and, or Sunday night yesterday was at MRCC and it was the annual meeting, so we were working on getting the budget approved for next year and that type of thing. And things are actually going pretty well with MRCC right now. There's, I think twenty-seven counties are members, which is the highest it's been, I think, since they started, so. And they're trying to recruit other rural counties to participate, so that's actually looking pretty positive and financially things are in pretty good shape. So, that's all I have for me.
Did you have anything on the diversion authority meeting? Did you go to that for him?
No, I wasn't, I was out of town.
Oh, that's right, oh, John. Okay, John, that's right, John. That's right.
We'll continue with committee reports, Frank.
I had, saw a lot of conservation district meeting. One of the items that was, was in Towsers Township, they got a big erosion, there's erosion going on, one of the ditch, ditches and they're trying to get a grant to get that fixed, so. About the main item we had there, I think.
Okay, Kevin.
I was unable to attend my meetings last week, so I had others going in my place. And I'm just wondering if, the week before, we had the, the only meeting that I had was the Clay County Joint Powers Board meeting. And I ended up having to leave that meeting early as well for, to attend a family medical deal, so. But the topic of discussion that morning was, Laurie Van Beek was there talking about the metro bus system and how that all works and potential changes, including some changes with routes to Delworth in the future and new routes in South Morehead. And I asked about the, if there's any way that we could ever incorporate our constant problem that we have in rural Clay County with transportation for the needs of our folks there that need to get in for medical assistance or whatever, so. You know, I asked them to work with Rhonda to see if there's ways that, there can be some connectivity there or something that could assist those people, so. That's all I have.
Okay, John?
I think the only, last Thursday I had the land management meeting for the diversion and then I attended the authority meeting for Kevin. It's pretty much routine stuff, I think, except they didn't pass the ordinance about how they were going to try and purchase property. Maybe Brian can explain that more, but it was, it was the procedure that was adopted that, that would put in place how, how we're going to do that. And also we talked about for farm situations, you know, it's so far out it's hard to, to be precise about what kind of a program they would have for, for the insurance for farmers that are farming there, but it was decided that we should proceed to, to set up the policy and the framework for it. Numbers, of course, can't be put in at this point because ten years from now, numbers will be completely different than they are now, but, but they decided to continue working on the procedure so that we could at least tell the farmers, this is how we will figure it out, this is, this is how it's going to be set up and we would, and seems to be complete agreement that we would cover, provide insurance for, for the farmers who are farming the land in case that the diversion is activated. So, that was probably the biggest issue now. Brian maybe has some other things, but. Then yesterday I went with Brian down to Fergus Falls and toured the recycling facility that Otter Tail County has and also the, the transfer station that they have. And it was very, very interesting. They have tremendous setup down there, much, much bigger than we thought it would be. And it's, seems like it's, it gives us a lot of ideas about possibilities of even working together. Their facility is, for, for recycling is, they just use one shift and they're at, pretty much at capacity for that, but, but the building is certainly adequate for, for running two shifts or, or whatever, so there's maybe possibilities even for, for us to share in their, in their recycling somehow, I don't know. But anyway, it gave us a lot of ideas about things we could look at for, for the future, so. That's all I have.
Okay. On Thursday, October tenth, Clay County Collaborative Governance Board meeting, general business, review of fiscal year two thousand thirteen. We discussed the two thousand twelve and two thousand thirteen calendar year reports, went over committee memberships within the collaborative, and then we also had the coordinator's report. This morning, on October fifteenth, we had, Grant and I were at Personnel Issues Committee meeting, some healthcare savings plan issues were discussed, and then down the line we'll come up with some ideas regarding vacation and sick leave policy, and Brian might want to add something to that down the line when his report comes. This time we will go to number two on the agenda. Tim Magnuson, review of our policy regarding use of county-owned property, planning county-owned property.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
Let's see, where are we? I brought the sheriff along just for protection.
Yeah.
Well, you're, you're all well aware that the county has acquired a substantial amount of property as part of our flood buyouts, all the way from the start of them in nineteen ninety-seven through the two thousand eleven buyouts. And there's been an issue as to, you know, how, how we deal with them, what are we going to allow on them, that sort of thing. We did have one, one issue this summer where one of the deputies found an individual that had pulled his pickup and fifth wheeler and motorcycle in on a piece of property up in Oakport Township and was apparently looking to spend some time there. He was asked to remove that, if I'm not mistaken. But, you know, we have people calling about hunting and everything else, and last year we did establish, at least for that year, for last year, some policies. And I guess we met on the first of October to talk about those issues again. And the handout that was provided in your packet lists the policies that we'd like to see adopted at the current time, put them in place until such time that we can commemorate some regulation into ordinance form as to usage of county-owned property. The regulations that were, the policies that we're asking to establish would be that, you know, county-owned property is for general, use of the general public unless it's posted otherwise. That hunting on county-owned property shall be allowed in accordance with the hunting regulations that are promulgated by the Minnesota DNR. As part of the hunting, no permanent stands for hunting or any other use be placed or constructed on county-owned land, temporary stands put up and, and removed on a daily basis. One of the issues with, with being able to put a permanent stand up is it kind of, it creates a territory. You know, I built it, it's mine, get away. About all it can lead to is a confrontation in the field with armed individuals, and it's not what we're looking to, to foster, so. Anyway, not allowing motorized vehicle traffic on the county-owned property. We did talk about camping, and if we're not going to allow motorized vehicle traffic, then we thought if somebody wants to carry a tent and walk in, you know, that's fine, as long as they don't intend to stay more than five days. Recreational fires in a pit no larger than three feet, that's actually the DNR standard for the state, so. But then requiring that they be attended, and that's, that's a common sense issue, but when farmers burn their ditches, that's not always what happens either, so. And then for this year and possibly next year, depending on how the seed takes, you know, having the sheriff's department put signage up about the newly seeded areas and to, to keep off of those completely. We only probably have a half a dozen properties that were seeded this year, some actually pretty late this year, so. We'd like to give them all the opportunity that we can to, to establish vegetation before people start wandering through there, so.
Any comments from anybody?
Yeah, I guess I would ask if there's any questions.
And do you want action on this today?
Yes, hunting season is coming up quite rapidly, so.
Frank?
Well, when we say no motorized vehicles allowed, I was just wondering, I'm not a hunter, but when you shoot a deer, do they use an ATV to take them off sometimes, or?
They can, but this would not be allowed.
So they couldn't, they'd have to drag it off?
Well, it's.
Property's not very big, I mean, we don't have any.
I mean, I don't know.
We only have one that's big enough, and that's one across from Buffalo State Park.
Oh yeah, that's four hundred plus acres. The remainder, you know, it's not like you can't get a, well, if you look at the Gander Mountain ads or the Cabela ads, you know, there are the carts, the two-wheel carts for hauling game out.
Yeah.
That, that kind of stuff can be utilized. The issue with allowing motorized vehicles is that once you establish a trail, then it's there and lord knows what winds up on it.
I was just going to see if that's allowed, that's, I'm not, not against it, I.
Well, and that's something that when we look at the ordinance form that we're hoping to generate here, you know, the DNR does allow twice during the day the ability to take an ATV out on property, you know, you can't go out there and drive through the whole day during a deer season. They do have, you can drive up prior to sunset or sunrise, you can drive out after sunset, and there's, I think, a two-hour window and towards the middle of the day that you can have an ATV on, operating, so. That's something that I think when we start looking at it a little bit closer, we might want to consider.
Any issues today, Bill, that you, your people have to deal with?
No, our biggest issue is going to be the property on Highway ten. There is a permanent stand up there, which we're going to go take down. There's people that own property up there and there's been a couple of times they've posted our land, to say that it's their land, so we're going to definitely meet with them here before hunting season so they understand. I mean, they can hunt like anybody else, but just because they can come in on their side with an ATV, they can drive all around our property.
Kevin?
Yeah, I don't know who all you had work on this, but it was, I think it was good work and thanks to all did that. I want to go to number five on here. Recreational camping on county property is allowed, but limited to no more than five consecutive days. And you mentioned somebody going in there with a tent, what if you had about fifty people who wanted to go in with something other than tents and just have a five-day little party?
Woodstock?
Yeah. I, I have concerns over that, and this would not address that. You know, so, so, and what, you know, and I, and I'm thinking out loud here and maybe Jenny could help us a little bit, but I, I think all of these, we have good intentions, but oftentimes we, we don't know what might develop that could be counter to what we're, or not necessarily opposite of what we want to try to do, but, but the, the biggest concern that I would have would be something that would upset the health and, and safety and the nuisance to neighbors. And, you know, I, I would like to see us, if we're going to put this in a policy form, I would like the ability for, even though we may have it written in a certain way here, that if the sheriff's department deemed any of these to be in an unsafe type of manner or so on and so forth, that they would have the ability to shut that down. I, I, I don't know how else we could do it, but, and, and I'm mostly focused on number five.
Wouldn't our law enforcement chief officer have the ability to do that regardless of this?
Yes.
What this is?
Yep. I mean, if they were there drinking and having a long party.
If you thought they should be out of there, you'd have the authority to stop it.
Yep. But I do know too, the river keepers keep talking about, you know, trying to do things with the river and looking for places where people can canoe and stop and camp for the night.
Well, that's, that's appropriate.
Right, that would be appropriate, but there's so many of them areas, you know, the banks are way too high for them to nicely do that, but at some point they might come to the board and ask about it.
Bill, my, my point was, you know, you, if you have an area out someplace and you can even take, take into consideration what the four hundred acres that we have or whatever it is there, and so now we're establishing, okay, well, we're allowing recreational camping to go on out there, and you have, you have some people that are going to go out there with their campers and they're all of legal age to drink. We don't have anything that says you can't have alcohol on those properties, do we? So, so they could go out there and they could do all those things and all be of legal age, and I, I question whether, if we have this in policy, you could just tell them otherwise to just leave.
Right, and obviously the only thing they could do is a tent, no motorhomes or no cans.
But this doesn't say that.
Well, I guess the intent here was if we're not going to allow motorized vehicles on the property.
You can't get in with it.
Then we wouldn't be able to get in.
Okay, okay.
But, you know, there, if you go to any city of Morehead Park, you know, the idea of alcohol being consumed on site, there's not a city park in the city of Morehead that allows alcohol to be consumed on site, you know, so there are things that we could do in ordinance form.
Yeah.
That we could take care of that, and then if the sheriff went out and found him drinking alcohol, the choice is to pour it all out and send him home, or, you know.
How hard it would be to add no alcohol on county land, I don't know.
Well, I, I guess my biggest fear was just having, you know exactly where I'm, where I'm going with it.
Yep.
Whether you had fifteen campers or thirty tents out there, if you, if thirty of the tents with the wrong people in there, they can.
And the thing about it is, is not, not allowing motorized vehicle traffic on the, the properties is good, but there are a couple of properties where we would physically have to put a gate up to ensure that that did not occur, or at least to stem the possibility of it. We have a situation, and it was talked about, people posting land that is ours. Week prior to bow hunting season, opening up one of the properties that we bought south of Morehead, I had a kid call who's been hunting there under the old property owner's permission, you know, for the last six years, and he said, I just went out there and it's posted up tighter than a drum. And of course, none of it was legal posting, it was all posted signs, no signatures, no nothing. And it appeared to be, you know, the adjoining property owner who just didn't want anybody out there, so. We've had one, one road into county property that a private individual has placed a gate on, so it's.
Well, I guess, I guess the sheriff answered my concern then, in the meantime, I think if, until complete ordinance is done, if he, if, if he feels he has the ability to go in there and, and stop something, then I guess I'm okay with it.
Any other comments? John?
Oh, I would, I would move that we adopt these proposed policies to be in place until we establish ordinances that would replace them.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kerry, Tim?
If, if I might add, Sheriff Burke was brought up one other issue, and that is, on some county properties, we have individuals who are in, are commercial beekeepers who have taken the liberty of placing colonies on county-owned land, up in Kevin's neck of the woods in particular. You know, the whole idea is it was acquired with, kind of with public money and is not to be used for, for personal gain. I guess we're curious as to what the county's, county board's thoughts are on that. I think the sheriff ought to be able to ask those individuals to remove those, those colonies because they aren't there for personal gain.
Yeah, that's kind of ironic, though, it would, it would benefit our, our area having bees out there, I suppose, too, so it's, but, yeah.
My thought too was, you know, if it's used for public and they can go hike and walk on it, obviously you can't where the bees are.
Right, that's true, yeah. Yeah, it's probably a good idea to, yes, I'll tell you.
Are there any liability issues for the county with that?
I think there would be if we are aware of a.
Business.
Well, I think it, it could almost be classified as a nuisance of some sort in the sense that the bees could be dangerous.
Public safety issue.
Public safety issue, and so if we know that something like that, a nuisance or attractive nuisance exists on the property and we don't take action, we could be assuming some liability, so. Yeah, I think, I, I don't think it's a wise idea to condone those actions. I mean, and then, and then it kind of opens the floodgates too, because then can you, can you plant a private garden on public land? Can you, you know, all kinds of things. If you can, if you can keep bees, can you, can you raise chickens or can, you know, I mean, it just opens up a whole flurry of things we don't want to get into, would be my opinion.
Bill, I'll leave that in your hands.
Well, it's just going to be hard to find out whose they are unless you happen to be there at the right time, but.
And this was mentioned to me just before the board meeting, we did not discuss this at committee, if you remember, Commissioner Everett. But under number three, where you say no permanent stands for hunting or any other use, it seems like we could incorporate something that there would be no additional days or overnight and structures, and, and that could be construed as honeybee hives would be a structure that would be left overnight and that would be improper for this. So I don't think we'd have to change this a great deal in order to make a modification to accommodate that type of thing. And, and, you know, you talk about the gardens and things too, that has been talked about a little bit.
And I do know up there where these beehives are is where the county piles all the snow, you know, to get it close to the river. And I know last winter they had to work around all those beehives because they leave them there all winter long.
Well, they, they had them in two different places up there. Just had, for a while they had them just to the south of Wall Street and then to the, now I think they're in the north, down by the river.
Yeah, he's got them all piled up now, a little closer to the road, but it was in them open areas where they dump all the snow, so.
And we could, we could revise number three to, to include no permanent stand under a structure for hunting or any other purpose that we try.
Pretty much covered.
That'd be pretty much covering it.
Should we?
Yeah, I think.
Should we do that?
Yeah, I think we should.
Did we vote on the other one?
Yes.
I would like to make a, a motion that we add those words to our number three to make it.
Seconded by Frank, discussion? Kevin?
Jenny? We should have clear, something pretty clear in that, do you have an idea on what? You know, because I, I think it, it should almost be all encompassing about, you know, because just as she said, if we talk about, if we talk about just the structures, that would be the bee cages or whatever you call them, we're still not addressing the issue about one wanting to go out and create a garden, because there, you know, because there's, there might not be any structures associated with garden, you know, so.
Couldn't we wait till the ordinance to get that precise?
Well, I suppose we could, I.
I think if we should, if we could get the. We're on some wage for all of that.
Yeah, if we could get the structure part of it in policy now, we can, we can pull the other part in, I think, with the ordinance.
Okay, okay, all right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kerry? Thank you, gentlemen. Next item, single lot plat approval, planning and environmental programs director, Tim Magnuson again. Tim, aye.
The request before you came to the, the county planning commission on the twentieth of August, it's taken a long time to get here because it's taken this engineering firm forever to get us a plat drawing. So the, the information that you have in your packets, I don't know if you had this or not. I just think my computer was getting flaky with me that, when that stuff went out, so I will just start that around. You've got two there, you've got three there. This particular plat, the single lot plat, we're going to be part of the all, is integral to the Lakes Wind project. It's the substation to where all of the, all of the wind tower generators, the lines will be piped to this, this substation and then it'll go out from there down, down the road to the Otter Tail substation to get on the grid. The requirement for this, this plat is because the use is a commercial use as opposed to an agricultural use, so it does require a plat versus just a, you know, an administrative The single lot is going to be accessed by an easement, that's not normally how we work, but the first proposal for this subdivision was, it was pushed right down to the county road right away. And what that did was it didn't give them enough room to do, to provide the setbacks from the county's centerline of the county road for the structures they're putting on it. So we asked that they move it back far enough and kind of as a concession to that, instead of requiring direct access, we allowed them access by easement. It's a very short easement, up to the southeast corner of the parcel, it's not going to be utilized more than maybe once a month, if that. So we did not think that was going to be a major issue. And it keeps all of the, the structures that are being placed there on the substation back at the one hundred and twenty-five foot setback or further for the county regulations. So, I guess what's being asked of you today, and, and the aerial that went out just gives you an idea of where it's being placed relative to the roadway and the nearest properties, residential properties. The request before you today is just to approve, there is a larger plat drawing up there on the, the stand, but to approve the single lot plat as proposed, so we can get the signature process taken care of, they get it recorded, and it's over with.
It's known as block one?
It's known as block one, lot one, or lot one, block one of Lakes Wind subdivision.
Tim, the, the easement, who is the easement granted to?
It's granted to Lakes Wind.
Does that, does, does that run with the land?
Yeah, the easement would run with, relative to this piece of property, that it was perpetual easement.
So if that, if that ever were to change hands, the easement would also go with it?
Yes, it would be perpetual easement to whoever is the property owner of lot one, block one.
So if there was ever a default on that property and it came back to the, to the state and the county, then we would have the rights to that easement?
Yep.
More to your wishes, gentlemen?
I would move that we grant the request.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kerry?
Thank you very much.
Next item is new public disclosure requirements for county commissioners, Brian Berg will have that, and also, Brian, would you all take on the agenda addition regarding? have that, and also, Brian, would you also take on the agenda addition regarding request City of Dilworth to discuss law enforcement services?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, certainly will, good morning.
Good morning.
And, uh, what I'll pass around is just a, a handout that I received from AMC. And what this is, Mr. Chair, board members, uh, last Thursday afternoon, uh, I sat in on a webinar for the Minnesota Camp, Campaign Finance and Public Disclosure Board, there's not much changes on this, but there was a change in the last legislative session, and you'll see more about this as you attend meetings and different things, it's not a huge deal, we're not going to go through this handout like, I think we just printed this out yesterday afternoon and, and, uh, Vicky copied it because it was sent out a little bit later, but just a couple items in there is that the legislature changed your classification or as effective January one, 2014, instead of being local officials, you will now be public officials after the first of the year, not a big change, but there's certain laws and regulations that apply to public officials that didn't apply to local officials, so I, the purpose of today's awareness is just to make you aware that there is that law change, the, probably the biggest change will be the fact that you will have to file a statement of economic interest after your next election, so, uh, even though it goes into effect January first of 2014, it isn't until after you are next elected will you have to file that, so, um, they made that pretty plain, and it's also in this handout for you, um, the disclosure of conflicts, if you vote, uh, they, they spend a little time on defining that, this board does that, and, and I've never seen an, an issue, I feel if you have a conflict, you usually recuse yourself from the vote, and you don't necessarily have to do that, but if you do vote on it, then you, you must, uh, issue a statement of what the conflict is, so in many cases, it's better to recuse yourself, but if you have a strong conviction to it, that, that, uh, that you want to vote on it and you feel it is a conflict of interest, then we'd ask for a, a statement on that, so, it's, uh, i- i- it's, it's, like I said, this is your first exposure probably to it formally, and AMC put this out, they said there will be more to come on it, you'll see it when you attend the AMC conference, you'll have a exposure to this probably many times before you have to follow the regulations on it, uh, the only reason why I'm handing it now is to let you know that there was a change in the law, it goes into effect July first, 2014, and it, it affects you for filing the statement of economic interest after your next election, and, uh, I think, I think those are probably the, the main points that I would want you to glean from this at this time. Thank you. Uh, the next issue on the agenda, unless there's any questions for me, um, the next issue on the, uh, agenda that we added was a request from the Silo, City of Dilworth to discuss law enforcement services, and if you don't mind, I would ask Sheriff Burke to come up and join me, uh, for any comments or questions, and we can go through this just, uh, real quickly, um, as you know, the City of Dilworth is currently with a, uh, acting chief of police, they are wanting to explore their options as to how they handle, uh, law enforcement in the future, and one of those options that they would like to study, review, communicate with us, uh, would be, um, the sheriff's office being involved in the management and supervision and, and different things of the law enforcement function in Dilworth, and, uh, uh, you know, I could anticipate from the public or from you folks, okay, what does that mean, does that mean that the sheriff's office is going to take over law enforcement duties in that city, certainly that's an option, um, to what degree and, and what kind of contract are we talking about, what service, what length, what would you do with employees, all of those things would be ironed out, what we did do is we met with a couple of their officials last Thursday to talk about whether they want to move forward with this discussion, uh, and they want to do that, so, um, I said I'd appreciate them discussing it, and hopefully they discussed it at their meeting last night.
They did last night.
They did.
I did talk to Ken this morning.
Oh, you did, okay, great, so we wanted to bring this to you folks as soon as possible to see how you want to handle it, uh, I felt there was maybe two or three different ways, if you wanted to assign, uh, commissioner to work with us on it, if you want us to meet with them, and as we progress with proposals and discussions back and forth, we could keep you informed as a whole board, uh, we will, we will be certainly willing to do it any way you wish, I know originally we kind of thought that, uh, it would be good to have a commissioner involved or two on the, on the committee itself that talks about that, and if that's your wish, we would certainly welcome that.
If this would come to pass, what would the timeline be, or is that too early to even speculate?
Well, it's, it's gonna be something that's gonna take a while to-
A year?
-get into play, it could take a year, up to a year to get it in place, yes.
Thank you.
Brian, were you, anything else to add at this time?
No, no.
John?
Uh, I'm encouraged by this, this discussion, at least, I don't know where it should, you know, would end up, but, uh, I, we've talked in the past about the, the duplication of, uh, of services for law enforcement in the county, and ideally, I, I think ideally that, that one law enforcement, uh, organization in the whole county would be, would be the best way to, to go, uh, it's up, you know, that of course has to be decided by each community individually as to whether or not they want to do that and give up their, their law enforcement, but, uh, but it's, uh, it's a discussion I think that's really important that we, that we undertake at this time.
Yeah, I, I, at least I, I think it's a really good start in terms of our smaller surrounding communities looking at this as, um, you know, obviously it would, it would take some work to change the entire county with, uh, with the Morehead metro area, there, that's a, that would be a whole big animal that would have to spend a lot of time with, but, uh, the idea of, um, Dilworth and, you know, potentially others coming in, I think, could make a lot of sense to, to do, and we've talked about this before, and I think, um, we've got a guy that's on our commission that's been kind of involved with law enforcement stuff, I think he'd be a natural to, to, I said on the commission, not our administrator.
Not looking at me!
I would entertain a motion regarding our former police chief to be our representative with perdeem.
Well, Mr. Chair, just a thought on that too, uh, you know, um, I, we, we've, uh, talked a little bit about this, but, um, also I know, just to open it up a little bit, the, the commissioners that represent the area too may have an interest in it, uh, I know Frank didn't speak up, I, I should, or Commissioner Everett didn't speak up, and-
Well, no. Well, I, I was gonna say too, I mean, add, add to that, you know, I mean, I'd be willing to sit, to sit on this commi, I don't know how many we want to put on this commission, you know, but, yeah, still it is my area, and, uh, I'd be very interested in, uh, being involved in it if that's, uh, if we get to that part of it, you know, and we're gonna do that, you know.
Just so you know, last night in their council meeting, they came up with two options that they're looking at, one is still pursuing a chief, but the other, what they are looking for us is to take over entirely, so not-
But that's-
Entirely and permanently.
Yes.
Arbitrary discussion, that's what this is about.
Correct, so that's what the proposal that we will be working on is to give them to take all law enforcement services.
Brian, if we had these two gentlemen, um, going to these meetings, if we had three, then you-
Well, you can't.
Then you have an open meeting, yeah.
Right. Well, and I, I think that, I think that's a good idea, um, I don't mind having two on there at all, and I, I just, I think we just always got to keep in mind what, what could be drafted here, um, could be a model that would have, that would be followed in other districts besides the district that Dilworth is in, so, um, so I would just keep that in mind, but I, I would move that, or, did we have a motion on the table?
No, not yet.
Okay, I, I would move that we, uh, have commissioners, um, uh, Wayland and Frank, serve on, on this committee to review this request from Dilworth.
Is that with perdeem?
Yes.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Just on a little note, I did talk to, uh, post board, Neil Melton, and up to date, there's 100 police departments that have disbanded in the state of Minnesota. They haven't lost any law enforcement because, you know, they went to contracts with sheriff's office and, so.
Quick question, at this time, are, you are open to this as our sheriff?
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Uh, Brian, we'll have your update when you're ready, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, uh, I'll run over just a few things here quickly, we had a central administration staff meeting when, uh, which was, I thought, really productive, we got to visit with all of the different departments and central administration, any concerns that they may have over different issues, uh, had the Chamber of Commerce Public Affairs meeting, and, uh, April Walker, who is the city engineer from Fargo, was there to talk about the second we, second street, uh, flood, whether they look at a tunnel or look at, uh, diking along there and different things, which was quite interesting, uh, we had management team meeting, we had several topics that we went over with the management team, uh, also for your information, maybe some of you didn't, uh, weren't aware, but our veteran service officer, Tom, has been out for a while, he's back to work part-time now, um, things are going well with him, uh, attended the webinar that we talked about here on public officials, uh, Commissioner Everett and myself were down at Fergus Falls yesterday, not a whole lot to add, other than I'll just echo what, what Commissioner Everett said, I was extremely impressed with what they've done down there, I, I didn't realize they were anywhere near to the magnitude of recycling and, and they built a brand-new transfer station that we were looking at as far as, uh, a compaction unit and, and, uh, things, so it was, it, we learned a lot, I think, down there, which really gave us some ideas for moving forward on it, so, and also, I'd like to speak to the two commissioners about putting together a, uh, interview panel too for our selection process for, for solid waste. Um, a shutdown date, our update on the, uh, federal shutdown, I mean, it does sound like they're making some progress, but, uh, I, I got an email from Kathy McKay, public health director, yesterday afternoon, and, and I'll just read it, it's just a couple sentences, "We continue to have weekly conference calls on the state and local agencies about the WIC program, on today's call, the state WIC staff relayed that funds would be available through mid-November," uh, and last week, if you remember, it was, they were talking about the end of October, so that's positive, this certainly gives us more time for planning, so she'll provide more updated information in the future, uh, Rhonda's situation really hasn't changed with social services, uh, being very watchful and, um, but that's on a different, um, funding cycle, so that helps a little tiny bit anyway, um, the, uh, we had a PIC meeting this morning and, uh, talked about some personnel issues, we'll bring maybe another issue just forward in a, in a couple of weeks, uh, for you folks to, to consider, um, we, uh, at the land management and the diversion meeting, we did talk about the liquidation of property again, and, uh, Mr. Campbell, I did bring up the fact when it was talked about, I said you had a concern in that area, and they've assured me that, or in fact, it was, uh, um, chair of the diversion committee, Daniel, said that, uh, this does not conflict with what your concerns were as far as liquidating some of the properties, so we'll keep a close eye on, on those issues on it. Um, I did receive a, a note from Jerry Waller that, uh, he was appointed, remember, last year as the citizens' representative on the Agassi Recreational Trail, and, um, he wishes to resign effective December 31st on that, so, uh, you folks will have to appoint another citizens at large, um, although I told him that, uh, good move, but the board won't accept it, so. I haven't heard back from him after my comment, so we'll have to do that between now and the end of the year if, uh, and I, and I know Commissioner Gross is our representative on that mantle, so he can probably have some insight for us on that, and, uh, I think that's about it, Mr. Chair.
Jenny, anything for you?
I just wanted to mention that last week I was down at some training in St. Paul and, uh, had the opportunity, since I was down there to meet, uh, to actually go to MCIT, to their office space and meet with several individuals there, get a better understanding of, um, the whole gamut of what they provide for the county, and, uh, a lot of, um, services or opportunities maybe that we could, uh, involve ourselves in, in the future, so, uh, just for your information, it was a very good visit, they pretty much rolled out the red carpet because they were very excited to have, uh, county attorney input and, and visit their office there, so, um, for what it's worth, if you have any questions, um, I do have real good contact, uh, people there, and they were so willing to, to discuss and, and to make themselves available if there should ever be any issues, so.
Vicky?
Yeah.
Gentlemen, anything else? No, we adjourned.